Yeah, he's.
What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at the hand history from Peter. Peter, you played this thirty dollar tournament on GG and you took first place.
Yeah, this was a delicious Friday night action tournament.
Amazing.
Hundred and fifty runners only. Yeah.
So very good. Alright, let's see how you do it.
Alright, so.
This is PKO?
Nope.
I think no.
The dirty thirty.
Dirty thirty. Hey Pete, do you wanna filter for hands you VP I pip or do you wanna look at them all? It's up to you.
Sure, we can do that. Is that an option? Uh, where is that?
It's you're gonna have to close that. Close every player.
Yep. You can filter it in your tracker, just tag VP IP.
Have filter, yeah.
Isn't it? Yeah, you go to action and opportunities at the bottom, Peter.
Action.
On the left.
Left.
Yeah. You see where it says game detail, hand detail, hand value? Yeah. Now if you go to pre-flop. Uh, voluntary put money in pot, you click that at the very top.
The first one.
Click the first one.
Yep.
There you go. Now you say add to filter and it should work for you. One tournament? Yeah, so I guess you just open the tournament. What's this at the top? How it's like, uh, this is interesting how you have it broken into days.
Just double, double click that and it'll open it.
Yeah, there you go. Now you can select.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I, yeah, I haven't seen that.
Me neither. Pete, teach us how you.
And, and the, in the report tabs, you can select calendar.
Ah, calendar, got it.
Alright.
So yeah, you just have to scroll to the bottom and then do the reverse.
Alright, so we start with the seven deuce, I guess.
Seven deuce.
Always lose.
Pete, maybe you could just select time and put him uh, on, on the right order. It's gonna be easier, I think.
Yeah, if you could, if you go back to uh.
Go back to your tracker.
Go back to put tracker.
Okay, close this.
Yep. And just click the column, date or time.
It's gonna be the right order, guys. It's just in reverse.
Yeah, date.
You can flip it. You can flip it if we're, if we like scrolling down instead of up.
No, no, don't change that. No, 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 no. Up at the top, up at the top of the list depends. It, it says. Date.
Date. You have, they click there, yeah.
One person, can you explain it?
There we go. Are we good to go?
Yeah.
Hey, look, seven deuce. Now we get to scroll down, though.
Alright.
Amazing.
I know.
What a thing this technology. The seven deuce is loose and we defend.
It's suited.
Oh.
It's, it's fine.
Check raise. Nice.
You could call this too, I think this deep, but I like raising.
So, oh, then. Yo wizard.
Probably at the hand.
There are seven deuce.
Oh.
I'm gonna need you to reverse that na 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 if it ever calls.
Uh, here it is.
Press on it, Pete. Press on it. Press on the seven, yeah. No, 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 just press on, on the yellow. Yep.
Check.
Primarily call it.
Hey Louis, can I get a reverse na 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 real quick?
No, because Pete, you just used the wrong sizing. It was raised and big ones.
Here, I'll, I'll help you. I'll help you Louis.
What is the cue for next hand?
Uh, it should be there for, uh, the, the, yeah.
So king eights. We get it through. Six, defend. Off the king.
Is this a depend? It's too loose this team.
Ah, king six is a call.
Says like king six here.
Eight to bigs.
Six. Uh, ours.
It's the wrong king six, uh, it's.
That's the wrong king six.
Next king six. Uh, it is mostly a call, sometimes a three bet.
Okay. Yeah, you never fold king six.
Okay.
Not here.
Get here with our king six. Face a bets. Uh, and we have one of our worst kings.
I like calling.
Calling him.
Yeah, this deep, I like.
And it goes check, check, which means we get to have a large bet on the river.
No, I think it's a bit small.
I'm gonna bet six with a king and four with a jack here.
I disagree, I disagree. I think your best up pair is our betting big. Your worst up pair is our betting small. Your second pair of betting small.
You don't have your best top pair because you check raised flop.
No, not always. You mix with that.
No, yeah, yeah.
River bets.
Oh, I like your big bet Pete. I like your big bet a lot.
Ninety-eight percent there with our side.
Okay, okay.
They're bad. Likes it.
I have one question. What was your overall, it was your overall GTO score?
I'm not sure. Let's take a look afterwards. But it gets.
I like that.
Well, this one's gonna be easy. Little squeeze. Get it.
Good. Alright, so what is your sizing here typically?
This is a bad day.
Yeah, I'm betting big.
Yeah, connected. If this was suited, I would be close to betting hot here, but offsuit, I'm still gonna bet a little smaller. Probably fifty to sixty percent.
Yeah.
I, I like half pot. I like a.
Can we, can we go even bigger?
Yes, you can. You can, you definitely can. This is good size.
So this is probably two, this is almost two thirds. Yeah, this is two thirds pot.
I think this is fine.
You gotta call. And size up.
Um, you have the diamonds. The diamonds relatively a blank. I like going kinda large here geometric to get it all in.
Oh, on this flop, I, I would just like to see the report cuz I'm wondering if that, if there's a lot of small betting too. With the range.
Let's take a peek see. Uh, it wants to bet ten point three. So we went eleven, seven. We're a little big.
No, but can we see what the range is doing? So Peter, if you went a little smaller and you bet half pot here, you'd have a half pot river shove.
And then three. What is going on here?
Just click small blind. After, after the.
Kinda weird all in node.
Af- after the flop. After the flop, check small blind.
Okay. There we go. So quite a variety of sizes. Fifty percent is the eleven point three size. A little bit of the sixteen and a little bit of the uh, five.
Primarily, you want bigger.
Yeah, it's hard, hard mixing.
Yeah, your range is, your range is never checking here and it is primarily middle bets with a bit of big and a bit of.
I, I know it was a range bet. That's why I thought there would be more small betting now.
That's the nature of the dangerous connectivity of the nine and the ten and then the deuce, which is a complete blank for it.
Yeah, if you think about a three bet pot, he's defending all the Broadway, so he's gonna have to continue with a lot of, a lot of heads. So you get to charge him.
Then we go eighty percent pot.
Yeah, I think that's too big. Nah, I would.
The turn actually, uh, I made a mistake. It shoves.
Doves, wow, okay. Yeah, I think that, that size is kinda awkward. Sets up a really awkward river. So I guess all that makes sense. It's checking ninety-nine percent of the time.
Looking for a check here. Right, but like it, it pushes my size to be all in cuz I bet so big. So it wants to check because the three and the two are such bricks. That you wanna let him start bluffing with the straight draws here that are. The peeled one and now are stuck here with queen high or king high.
So do we check call or check jam, I wonder?
Uh, so you gotta check jam, I think, if they bet big.
In this spot.
Well, it's an SPR of one on the turn, I think. Slightly more, yeah, but yeah, about one point two five, I think, was.
On the turn, if we take the check line. This is his response. He has to bet two thirds of the time. And primarily the, uh, small size. A little bit of all in. And when he bets the small size of fourteen. Our response. Is to call with the aces.
We have no raising, range at all.
Bit of all in here.
No, it does some jamming.
Uh, whites are all in, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought they were out of range.
All the other over pairs jam, all the tens jam, lots of bluffs jam. Aces are the one to protect our calling range here cuz they're not afraid of anything that's gonna river. So yeah, I go a little big there and maybe lose a fish. So, uh. First mistake. Ding. Free bets.
Mm-hmm.
We check this one.
If he, if he starts turning on betting for value and buying river, if I can, hopefully.
It is not a check. It is a bet small.
Yeah, that's more. I think with the monotone board, I never would have found a medium bet. I think he got a ball.
That's. Draw. And we get there.
This looks good.
So here's a classic mistake that I make. I, I go for thin value too much on rivers where I should probably check.
Yeah, I think I'm checking here, honestly.
Cuz I mean, I can get called by worse kings, but am I getting called by an eight on this board?
Maybe if they have a heart, some other relevant blocker.
Uh, get called by an eight.
Nice.
Yeah, I don't think this is bad.
I do tend to over thin value bet rivers.
I mean, you got your best king X here. He didn't play it like he has a jack.
It's a good bet.
I think it's a good bet.
Yeah.
Raise, short, but lots of big stacks behind.
No.
You know, man.
Dude, stop raising under the gun, guys. It's, it's a horrible play.
Lowly.
I didn't, we just.
Okay, Romero, you're right. Romero's a fucking retard. I can't believe he would ever say something like that. Stop, stop trying to bluff under the gun, guys. With shit hands.
No, no one was advocating.
Yeah, no, trust me.
Chris, if you'll listen for two seconds, man.
Yes, sir.
No one was advocating for a bluff raise here. That's.
I just heard.
Right.
I just.
No, not this hand, but he said never bluff under the gun. I mean, I had. No one's suited under the gun. I'm definitely three bet.
Yeah. Sorry, I thought you bet this is a great bl- bluff raise.
I know, that's why, that's what, that's why I was saying, we gotta.
Whoops, gotcha.
Throw in a little C bet on the pop.
I wonder if in GTO that folds.
Doesn't show.
See if it folds in GTO. The ace nine.
It might. I wouldn't be surprised. I think it's gonna be close.
It's gonna flat.
It will, hundred percent.
Yeah, it's the, uh, what's the worst?
It's gonna flat, uh, ace, jack, ace, ten and ace nine here.
Okay. And probably fold AC.
Yeah.
But part of it too, is this guy's the only guy at twenty. Everyone else is like at fifty to eighty, right? So.
I wanna look that up.
Double barrel and get it through.
Was the depth sixty?
The guy who opened had twenty, but everyone else has fifty.
We'll call it sixty then.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, I, I think you're right. I think it's gonna be ace eights to fold.
That's what I thought.
Well, ace eight by three bet is a bluff rate seven. One of those is gonna three bet is a bluff. So we get a limper.
Yeah, ace nine, ace, ace eight's a mix, mixed fold, yeah. Okay, good, well done.
Limped or raised. Take a call and we go three ways.
This is alright.
I'm annoyed.
You're annoyed?
Yeah, I'm calling, but I'm annoyed.
By the unranked limper? We get a pretty dry flop and the limper decides this is the time he wants to strike.
Just let this go.
He wins, no, no big deal. Like, I would've three bet this pre versus like, um, the, the cutoff open. That's why I'm annoyed. And now I gotta just call and play out of position to two people and it really sucks. I would've three bet it too.
Okay.
Ten nine's almost always a three bet for some reason on all the charts. I don't know why it picks that hand, but. It mixes every, every ten nine at every stacked up for some reason.
Cool, little spicy here.
I like this. This is okay. It's, it's, it is a bit wide, but I think it's fine.
At our stack depth, it's okay, but with a couple of shorter players behind, it's maybe not so good.
Yeah, that's fair.
And we get three bets and we just give it up.
Hmm. Too big a sizing.
Raise, get called.
Oh, yeah.
Flop pretty good.
Order.
I like a small bet.
I like that one big blind bet here.
He's only got sixteen.
You can check and delay C bet or you can bet and I guess run it if he just raises.
Pair board, ranged bet.
Pair board. Yeah, but the sixes are okay for him. That's a key card for the big blind, so we're gonna have trump checks. Just for, just for information, I checked pre-flop Academy on the ace nine suited hand. And that's still a call with only twenty big blind stacks. Yeah. I won, but yeah.
So on the flop. Solver wants to check for bets micro.
Yeah.
How.
They're an aggressive player. I'm gonna check to that more often than bet and play turns and rivers, but.
Find the right sizing. And he calls. And we get a jack. The turn.
I think I'm peril.
And says, see that small, but we choose, we changed from the micro to the small sizing.
Really?
Yeah, it's still a board where he has a lot of sixes here and we've kept them really wide by only betting one big blind. So we still get to see that small, which we do. And he folds. We take it down. Ding. Hey.
Seems good.
Wapagadi.
I like a big bet here.
See with this hand, I, I prefer bet small.
You think?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
I think it's a big bet.
We go forty percent.
What do you do with pocket jacks here? You bet small?
Well, yeah, we'll probably split in our range.
That's it.
So, uh, so I'll, I'll give you an exploit against me. Right now, everyone tune in cuz this is what I do. This is a default strategy that I tend to have. If I have two cards below me against the big blind. I check jacks and tens here. To allow him to bet nines and sixes and queens and I'll be ahead of two thirds of his turn range.
Yeah, that's very good.
If I have pocket sevens here. I'm going to bet to try and get, uh, to try and represent the nine and the queen and put the maximum amount of pressure on a six.
Makes sense. Good strategy.
Yeah, I like the structuredness to it.
Uh-oh, I don't like this.
That's very good. You check back.
Hmm, I'd have led your ass.
Oh.
About this, how do you like the lead on me now, baby?
Well, I'm not, no, I'm not talking that turn or river, I mean.
Man, Pete, this is, this is spicy. I, I, I think it's good, man. I think it's good.
I love the phoenix jam on the river. Max jam, max value. Let's go. Oh, this cam.
Under straight.
Let's go.
Yeah.
Nice scam on the river for everybody.
I think it was a good hand.
I think the guy was happy to get his stand, but then.
You should have led turn, right?
So the flop we bats.
Yeah.
Uh, the turn. Big blind is supposed to check, even though it's a six.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, press on check.
Twenty percent bets, right?
Press on check, Pete. Big mind check.
Yep.
Press on it. No, 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 not that guess.
Yeah, just press, yeah, press, press the big blind check. Won't lay it.
There's, there's nothing to do.
Okay.
Okay. It's a study this spot.
Sure, we can take a look at his range here if you want.
Okay, cuz I thought when you pressed on it, it gave you all the, the, the range information.
Well, I think he has a hundred percent checks on the turn is the problem.
There are actually pop-ups that you can get, uh, I'll show you when we go back to it. I think he, I think he has a leading range with the six. Quite significantly, I think.
Okay. That's us. Sam. He has. A ton of leads. Kenneth Keppel would have got me here with a lead on the turn.
Ninety. What?
Yeah, he's only checking seven percent of the time on this turn.
Makes sense. This is the bottom card that bears. It's a key card for him.
Yep. So it puts a lot of pressure on us. But when it goes check, check.
So when it goes check, check, his cap is out.
Yeah. And then river's the scam.
And I, I think with his, his holding, he should have led the turn.
Yeah.
Seven, eight, yeah, like, well, it's leading ninety-seven percent of range, right? It's probably leading everything except the worst queens. Or the worst nines. Ooh, threes from early position. A little spicy for me. But we get three bet and fold, not something you normally do, but.
I think I, I pulled, I don't open three, Sarah.
I think that's probably why I folded because I don't normally open threes.
Oh, was there a table reason why you? Was a lot of, a lot of things getting through?
Um, generally, I, I ran pretty well in this tournament. Uh, so ace ten, we go for the re-bet against early position. Not great, but.
That's the low jack. That's metal.
So.
Uh, why did you go? Did you go four X?
Nope, he went two point five.
Oh, okay. Yeah, whatever.
So he stuffs the turkey and we give it up. But that's why you three betted and folded. Okay, king seven, get a couple of crawlers. Mono tone flop.
Guy flats with seven bigs. I guess it's fine. Wow, I've never betting this flop for what it's worth.
If you're gonna bet, you can't bet like a one big blind. You need to generate fold equity, so I size up a little bit here.
These are probably spots I miss.
Get it through.
Yeah, when, when you're in position, you can take a lot of shots in multi-way pots.
There is also like the dynamic of, I've got a big stack here. He's got a medium stack and the guy's got a little stack. So this guy's afraid of this guy just check, check jamming a lot, right? So he folds and then this guy just doesn't have anything and gives up.
That makes sense.
Bit of a situation, oops. Situation on there. King ten of spades. More open, goes through.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, church. Oh, we get given a gift.
Amen.
More chips.
That's right, preach it, Billy.
Jacks. And we raise. And we get this nice connected rainbow flop. Lots of draws and opportunities to call big bets.
They bet Andy. Yeah, like that. They could even go six, I think.
Yeah, maybe.
Five's good.
Should find those jacks.
Look at the wizard. What does the wizard say about the size?
Pot, maybe.
I saw it. I think it's up. The end of top, yeah.
You probably wanna go big.
No, it's not the same board.
So.
We have a little nine hour board.
Yeah.
Other page, maybe? Well, jacks. No.
Go, jacks.
No, no flop. Wow, is there another jack here?
Hmm.
We lost. Go back one page.
You can also sort by hands and then go back to have them in order if you want.
Yeah, but no, it's easier to follow.
See where it says cards, but you can always go back, right?
Can you?
Ace, you see? I think, I don't know for sure. I'm pretty sure you can.
We saw the seven deuce, right? No? Pocket checks, pocket checks.
Nine nine board. I can barely see them.
You're not, you're not fantastic. You're not, you're not. What was that?
Bonjour now.
Must've missed the pocket jack somewhere, yeah? Let's see if we can sort it by. Uh, no, it doesn't look like you can sort by cards.
It's a go back to the last hand, no, it's just.
Then the top left, you have a filter. Can you fill by card?
Nah.
Wait. What are you trying to say, say?
So what page are you on? It's like you're on page five. Shouldn't you be around page one or two?
Yeah, should be on one or two, right?
That's my.
Scroll all the way down to the bottom, Peter.
Yeah.
It's frozen, I think. What page are you on? Like, it looks frozen, frozen to me.
I get king, face king.
Now it says a hundred. So is this page one?
This is.
There's a hundred hands, so.
Well, it's a hundred hands per page.
Right.
Right, and so.
Okay.
Go to the end of the reports and then work backwards here and try and find those jacks.
What's this jacks here? Uh, big blind.
Um, yeah.
The, the detail wizard filter is filtered for all hands. Is there a filter where you can, in that way you could change?
Yes, you, you can select, uh, jack, jack.
That's what I thought. Now, up top, there's a filter and analyzed hands. See if it'll let, let you filter for BP IP.
Back jack.
The bottom one, the bottom one.
Yep. So on the flop, it is betting six. And what size?
No.
Five, three, four.
You, you, you went six and it bets eight.
Oh, it bets eight. It pots it.
Yeah. Oh, he says six. I thought maybe pot. But six for pie, I mean, times eight, eight or pots, not bad, right? Six, eight.
Turn, we go twelve.
There, I think you wanna check back.
And, uh, our bets a mistake.
What's it wanna do?
Uh, well, he checks. And we should be betting smaller. We should size down on the connected board or check.
We do not get the, the turn, right?
Everything comes in.
Yeah.
He's gonna have two pairs and shit like.
So he stuffs it on us. Which is okay cuz he has a lot of combo draws here.
Yeah, you gotta call now. You only, you only twenty percent equity.
I get it, but I'm still folding. They just don't bluff there.
And we catch him with the bluff.
He bluffed.
Well, I mean, he turned a marginal made hand into a bluff, right?
Yeah.
Maybe it was. See, I mean, this is like, if this is a bluff, it's bad. If he thinks that you're just capped enough where he can get value, okay.
Got shot with the eight.
I can accept that explanation better than this being a bluff.
Has a value end because he has a, a pair and a gut shot and it probably doesn't put you on anything good.
Yeah, I don't know. I could agree with the value.
Like I have a lot of eights still.
But I mean, it's like, is this an all in seventy two big blind pot value type of spot?
Let's see what he's supposed to be doing.
Okay. Let's go and study this and the depth because it is blind versus blind, so it's wide ranges.
It is.
He just decides he's had enough of me bullying him, man.
Clearly.
Uh, two checks. That's. And he calls. Earn. Checks and we bets. We don't really have this bet sizing. We should be betting five when we bet. And his response with the ten seven he had.
Your call.
Ten seven off is the call.
So he's jamming two pairs. Quite a bit.
But what side, what sizing did you make it?
So we went. Uh, twelve.
Queen ten, jack ten, you block. Uh, queen nine. Like eight, six, king, six after five.
See what he does with the.
Offered some six X.
See what he does with a bet ten.
It's not in range. We don't bet ten. We bet fiber check is our strategy.
I know, but what you did in game is bet twelve.
Yeah, so the only thing like it's a one percent combo, we either have nine, six or four, two, three, two. His response isn't gonna be great against that.
Okay.
Yeah, like we, we don't have any.
You got kings.
Value. We have kings and aces a bit. And ace deuce, king deuce, like our, our, it's too, too fringe a strategy.
Okay.
But when we do take that and pretend we have kings. His response is attack with an eight. Because he has lots of eights still.
But ten, seven, so, and seven, so pure cold.
Yeah, he's value, he's supposed to be value heavy here, right?
Well, he just has enough eights in range that he just gets to pile it in with the straight. And everything else is a marginal made hand.
Yeah. He would have got me.
Okay.
Okay, with the S P Rs.
We get some more chips with that jack, jack.
Oh, man, that guy didn't think I had gloves.
I mean, I don't think people bluffing up there. That's why I just fold.
Jack, get through. Blind versus blind eighty seven suited. Lot of flesh draw. Eat high. Check, checks. He's on the turn. He should never have an ace here. So we just bet big.
I mean, about the flop.
Sorry?
Why don't you bet the flop? We live pot, right?
Yeah, limp pot. I can probably check raise the flop.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, I don't like check raising unless I have an overcard, but I would have just led.
Um, yeah, maybe my hands too strong to lead here. Not entirely sure. But I'll see if we see eighty seven of clubs to be there. Be right next to some jacks.
I know you could probably do as well. When we look at a hand, what happens when you click a box to the left? That might be like a way to find where we last looked. See all those boxes on the far left?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm surprised how hard it is to find where we left off.
Try, try to filter for the hand again.
And then mark it and then go back out. Is this it?
So the hand's at the bottom, right? Jack is.
That looks like it.
This is eighty seven of clubs. This is the hand here. So ace turns, we bet, it takes out.
So the flop, is it mostly checks, right?
It, uh, leads a bit, mostly checks.
Okay.
All right. Up our lizard.
You check raise it.
Can we check raise it? Sure. Uh, ooh. Hey. A little bit risky here with, uh, one, two, three guys who can rejam squeeze us.
Yeah, you just fold.
Against the three X open, which is maybe gonna be a little more of the value component.
I call fold. I don't care. You're deep.
Wow.
Well.
Six to one and he's still deep stacked.
Multiway.
All one, but you would wanna club and ideally to call.
Yeah, multiway I would fold.
Think if I had the four in this situation, if I had the Kenneth Keppel effect with the four of clubs and the four of spades, I would call. Yeah. But I should fold this.
Because you're kind of deep and if you hit the magic four, here could go check, 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 and you could win and you could hit the four at any point as well.
Check. Oh, turn it into a bluff. Not good. Oh, we get it.
I see. It's good when a lot of people, if you know, like I play against a lot of people on H R that has to have that one C bet give up, like they stab every flop. And then check turns if they don't have nothing and it's, it's great to just bet against that.
Now, you shouldn't be there from the flop. That's what it says.
Yeah, well, it was, it was multiway, so it doesn't solve it. But, yeah.
Heads up, I'm sure it's a call though. But you had someone left to act behind you, so it's certainly not a call.
Yeah. Queen, defend it, flop, a wet board, rainbow. Uh, this guy's deep. I'm gonna bet four here a lot.
Least.
Any check here.
Get check raised. Uh, I think I'm probably gonna three bet.
I would call because they don't check raise bluff enough either, so I'm, I'm just calling a lot, honestly, in position.
Think with this hand, I wanna raise before a bad card comes for me. Think I'm still ahead a lot. But it's very dangerous. I call. You check raise checks.
Yeah, but I, I got too much value. I'm not betting.
You got a blast here.
Well, the board paired. I don't know if you get the blast.
Sixty percent pot for sure. You, you, you gotta. Check raise with many jackets.
Lowie, look at the effect of stack size.
I'm betting my jacks and my draws.
I'm, I wanna get in here.
Yeah, but.
I'm kinda with Louis because they don't check raise a lot of jack X is the only thing.
The S P R is a little bit over one to one. It's like one point two to one or something like that.
Checking fifty percent, betting, um, five, twenty nine percent. And betting eight seventeen percent. It is never going big.
Yeah, but I'm trying to stack a queen here.
Uh, you bet small.
Louis, Louis, you can behind it, still stack a queen. That's what I'm saying. The S P R is so small, you can afford to check.
Yeah, need to, that's smaller for sure.
I go, I, and I do use a bigger sizing here. I use one third pot.
That seems fine, one third.
And do we go for it on the river?
I mean, at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess you just.
I'm just all in, man.
But.
Soliver says never stuff the river.
Oh, good.
Does it wanna, does it wanna bet, though?
It, no.
It should want, it wants to check behind.
Yep. Soliver says it's a two street hand. But we stuffed the turkey. And we get a call from queen ten. And we have more chips.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. And raise from the button. Um. I might be three betting this, uh, a little less. Right against twenty five bigs. He's a little deeper. I'm gonna three bet it a little more.
For sure.
But we find a check raise on the flop. Not so sure about it. Looks spicy.
Hmm.
But we're well represented in our range with cards between them, but.
It's gonna mix some low frequencies with this combo, I think.
Flop. It is primarily a fold.
Super low frequency.
Yeah, we find an extremely low frequency line here. That's just not really real represented.
Put check mark in so you don't lose your space.
Well, we have the check mark on the other one, so we know to go up from there. Okay. Um, pocket fives, looks like a big blind defense. Oh, it's a jam. Are you guys defending eleven big blinds out of your hundred and seventy big blinds here?
Yes.
Yep.
You just lose.
Changed my answer.
All right. Another big blind defense spot.
I don't know if our, our stack size is relevant. It's just the math against the eleven big blinds stuff.
So we're, we're kind of like, you know, still middle stages of the tournament, but you can see, like, we've been on the warpath stacking people. And we are the chip leader here pretty big time.
You didn't have the ace of spades, did you?
No, we had the ace of clubs. We just give it up. Now the ten. Read that us. He put it in his face.
Seems good.
Guys like this?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I did.
If, if it's not right, it's close.
I would just call, honestly.
That's the right answer, uh, what Joey said. If it's, if it's not, it's very close.
Yeah, fifty's close, forty slam dunk.
Uh, low jack. All in is forty one percent. It is fine to raise, call or fold here with this combo and they're all the same.
Now, never fold.
I was gonna say, fold seems a bit. Uh. Nitty.
Yeah, it has no folds. Your raise, you're, you could call, three bet or jam. We chose the aggressive line. We get snapped. Ace king. And the chip, uh, the chip disparity between us and everyone grows. As you can see, I've run pretty pure this tournament.
Yeah, you're making their lives hard, Pete. It's hard to play with somebody who has that many chips.
Yeah. Standard defense. Second pair, turn equity and an ace.
Of spades?
Of spades. What do we wanna do here against this fifteen wine stack that leads three and a half bigs?
I think the overriding component is your pair, so I don't think jamming is gonna be as attractive as just calling. You don't get to fold. You got too much.
Yeah. I think I like to call here. And he's probably gonna shove the river.
Yeah, and, and you know, that's fine. You can just fold.
Oh, give up his bluffs. Most well, a lot of people give up bluffs, I should say.
Two, we flat. Some rejam stacks behind us. Maybe not the best move.
Yeah, it's probably fine.
Don't get it. So we just check through. Thinking of our friend Louis Philippe who says, what if a four comes?
Yeah.
Are you ever mixing in three bets with like pocket sevens, eights, not like sixes, sevens, eights there? Do you ever three better or you always call?
So the problem is that there's these guys with the rejam stacks behind us. Um, I am probably going to flap them ready much all the time.
So say they, everyone had about forty.
Yeah, you can start mixing in with sixes and sevens, I think.
Alright.
Right? You don't want an eight or a nine against this guy that's blocking kind of the bottom, towards the bottom of his range. So maybe a five. Fives or sixes are better. At forty. Give up. Open, get three bets, jam.
Wow.
Hmm, versus small blind, uh, man, you're kind of middle position.
Very close, but I call.
Yeah, it's close. I'll let this.
Yeah, it's clo- I think it's close, but I'd probably fold it.
If I was in later position, I would call.
But he gets there. Well, if you know you're gonna hit every board, you can't fold.
Yeah, so we continue to run pretty good in this tournament and continue our theme of man, marginal spots, we get there. And we get another ace, king in the blind. Give it a little squeeze, get called. Wop an ace. Wop an ace, good game.
You got a thousand big blinds now?
Uh, I think he's about two hundred.
If two hundred big blinds, and we are the chip leader.
Re-bet? Yeah.
Re-bet.
Jam, huh? That seems spicy. Is that good?
His, his twenty-five, right? Like, it's kind of the, the cusp. If he has thirty, we can three bet small, but.
Yeah, I mean, I just three bet seven.
I mean, that's using your stack now.
We can take a look.
Just bully the hell out of them.
Nine.
I three bet fold. I don't care. If they're opening enough, if they got, you know, they're playing right.
It is primarily a call with that hat, low frequency three bet, never a jam. So we're a little out of line here. But you're, uh.
But GTA Wizard, I don't think GTA Wizard takes into account. The, like, the psychological pressure you're, you're able to put on because you're stacked.
Yeah, not so much. Okay, so against under the gun, we flat ace jack. Um, and we mind up in a mess of a four-way pot. Get this forward. He leads, we just give up. And unfortunately, we would have, no.
King two off in the small blind. Let's go.
Oh, yeah.
The, the deuce, the deuce doesn't matter.
Yeah, how do you like this guy with fifteen bigs who decides to put one and a half more in with king deuce off?
Fish, mark that.
Hashtag fish tag. Let's go Monday morning.
You got a tag on him?
Probably now.
Yeah.
Uh, ace jack gets three bet jam. I'm gonna call off and flop aces and jacks. Good game, pocket sevens. Easy game. The raise.
Now I understand where all my luck is.
Loose open.
Queen ten, yeah. Offsuit tens, bottom of range. This is not a full frequency open, but because of the chip disparity, I'm gonna expand my range a little.
Yeah, and when you're running good, you can open your range too.
Yeah. So two Broadway cards are going to be something we want to lead a lot. The two is very disconnected. This is probably gonna be. Oof. Gonna be a range bet against it calling range.
I'm not sure, but I think this hand might be in a bluff, or I mean, check.
Um, so this is queen ten. Lap. It is looking to check seventy percent of the time. Does have thirty percent leads here, and they're all small.
Those numbers are for, are for the exact, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So our hand does lead here. Think I'm going to finally, no, I check. Facing the small bet, a marginal made hand is definitely gonna continue. Me small bets again. Or does not really change. They could probably still defend second pair here.
Yeah, for the small bet, I, I think I still call.
I never opened that hand, so.
Turn, check. We check ninety-nine percent of the time. Low jack bets, and we are supposed to call eighty-one percent of the time. We are starting to find some folds, though. So it also has a little bit of bluff raising.
I mean, if he bets larger, it's an easy fold.
Yeah, his size is weird, right?
The, the thirty percent bet, thirty percent pot. I feel like I'd have to see another card for that.
Yeah, like he could just be barreling diamonds small here, right?
So, yeah.
Peter, do you want to continue the hand history, or you want to pick up, uh, where we stop, uh, on the next session? It's up to you.
Uh, I can continue if everyone's still interested. Sweet. Hit. Uh, we find ace king again and get donated to. Good game. And eight-six from high jack. Towards the bottom of our range here, get stuffed on, let it go. There's nine. Position, get flatted, get three ways. Three-five-five. He should have some fives. He should not have any fives, and he didn't three bet shoves, so I'm thinking this guy's got a real problem with his hand. He's gonna have a hard time defending. I'm sure enough, it goes check, check, check. Once this guy checks, we are green lighted. Do have a nice big bet. And we get jammed off. So I guess he just has a lot of jack here. Maybe six spades.
Bet the flop.
Probably should have bet the flop.
Just small, clean up whatever. They're gonna struggle on a pair of board. I mean, if the guy has a five, I'll let you know, and you got a shitty hand anyway, so.
Yeah.
On that texture at least.
So it doesn't solve it because it's multi-way. Yeah. Uh, ace four. You open, we get flatted, double flatted, triple flatted. Wop a gutter. Out of position, check, 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 check. Uh, turn, double flush draw board. Don't block any of the flushes. We just get out. It's mean. Block a gutter, no backdoor flush. Eight big blinds, seems like a spot for one big blind. He bet and folds two broadways for us is really good against the big blind range. He's up. All. Uh, connected, flush draw, marginal made, deep stacked. I would check. Oh. Get check raised and call. I'm not sure I like this.
I mean, you got a call. I don't, I would check the flop. I'm not sure if it's good or not, but I would have checked the flop.
Yeah.
We do bet ace high and king high boards quite a bit.
Uh, so it is checking fifty percent betting, and it's betting small when we do, so that's okay. Uh, when he raises. Our hand is almost a pure call. Little bit of re-raising, very spicy. Turn is the ace, and it goes check, check. River is the ten. He bets, and we should be folding river.
And everything gets there. I own clubs too.
Yeah. And he shows us a set of nines.
So I feel like he probably shouldn't be betting river. What size did he bet? Did he block that?
He bet, he blocked.
I wonder if that's a thing.
He bet four into eighteen. Allowing us to call with two pairs and straights because we still have flushes here. So. Nine deuce. We bet and take it down, lot of tall board.
He opened eight-seven off?
No, he was the big blind.
Um.
Uh, two. Big blind, two cards. Key cards for position, connected board. We turn equity with diamonds, but now we have ace high. Think I'm probably just gonna check a lot here. And we get there.
I probably would have barreled.
And we stop. The barrel?
I think I would have. I mean, yeah, just because it's that board's so good for our range. Trying to get the weaker pairs to start folding.
It does barrel small, uh, twenty-five percent of the time, so it's just fine. Majority check, though.
Yeah.
I think I'm barreling all my other diamonds, but the ace side diamond, I'm gonna check.
Makes sense. And it's pretty great. Like, I don't believe the back you hit to flush here when you checked turn a lot of people.
Then on the river.
To put it.
Mm-hmm.
We get today.
Mm-hmm. We go all in. It is either sticks or all in. Mixing both sides is pretty heavily. So six to get paid, eight to try and get all the chips. But I've struggled with not getting greedy enough. And, uh, so tried to get greedy there. And just got the pot.
Yeah, like it.
Oh, better be a blind defense.
He should have a lot he can call with.
Better maxing.
Okay, this is just to give up. I'm blind. Jams five, we isolate. Not sure I like this play.
Yeah, I'm not loving it.
Yeah, that's kind of giving up by a big line.
I would have folded.
Well, he's gonna be pretty wide here. We're okay. The problem is like. If we call.
Is this the FT?
Uh, not, no, not yet.
Just laying dunk in the big blind, right? But it's mobile. I'll just let it go.
Yeah. This was a mistake. We flop. Yeah, it doesn't even show us, but. Yeah, I, I think this is pretty clearly a mistake that I made.
Should be, uh, isolate smaller, let's say to twelve or thirty.
Hmm, now the guy's got fifteen behind.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, done. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. I, I thought the others. Sorry.
Probably just should have folded and let this guy get away with it here. But we're not those scamming people, so.
That's awesome.
No.
Be sweet.
Yeah, it's nice when you make a blunder and it pays off anyways.
Oh, I don't mean, we didn't look, we don't have ranges to look at. It might not be a blunder. I'll be so positive about it.
This guy three bets us to six. So we're kind of priced in.
Yeah.
Oh, look at this. Looks like we're gonna get it in good. Oh, we have base. Um, that one.
The heater's over.
Heater for Peter is over.
It's gonna be a cooler.
Oh, we're getting three bet. Hope I don't call this off.
Easy fold, yeah.
And. Lot of range, get it done. Blind defense, ace nine against seventeen.
Hi, Jack.
Is that?
Call. Oh, he called too. I'm just calling.
Yeah. I could squeeze here, but the problem is when he goes all in, I'm never in a good shape. So. We just flop the ace, though. Keep everyone wide. It goes check, check, check. We bet small on double flush draw board. These diamonds. Because we can always blast river here if a diamond completes. Oh, we get an ace. And we blast river. We have a ton of bluffs with both hearts and diamonds that missed, so that's why I go big, I think.
Yeah, but do we have a ton of bluffs multi-way?
The flop went check, check, check.
Yeah, when he fold, when the other guy, it's heads up on the river, though.
I understand that, but when we initially lead turn. Um, we're multi-way. I just don't know. I don't know. I'm just asking. Like, I don't know that we have a lot of bluffs here.
I like forty percent.
Yeah, I like a smaller bet too, because I don't really think we have a ton of bluffs. I think we have some bluffs, but we're value-heavy.
Could call by a queen or lesser pairs.
We should still have some bluffs, not as, not as many as we would have if we were heads up on the turn.
So doesn't that drive the bet sizing down?
So if, if you're bluffing, how big are you bluffing here into the eleven big blinds?
I mean, I have hip pot-sized bluffs. I have like fifty-five percent bet. I have bluffs at like fifty-five percent. And over, and then big, bigger bluffs. Depends on. How much value I also have. Like, if I have the board locked up, if it's a really like locked up board for my range. Then I can have smaller bluffs. I think, in my mind.
And you're topping value. Are you trying to get, trying to jam to get paid by a, a Nick Daze?
Yeah, because he checks flop, checks turn, and checks river. Like, I just don't think he has a better ace than me there ever, because he's, he's gonna three bet his better aces pre-flop. So I don't, I, I think I am cooling a worse ace a lot there. But.
Yeah, that's kind of why I don't, I, I don't think, I think he rarely has an ace there, period. So that's why I like a smaller bet.
But I think be- because I have so many, like, I have bluffs with flush draws, and I have so many flush draws there. Um.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah. Because the, this guy checked on the flop too, so like, he just doesn't have an ace here ever. So I think because he doesn't have an ace and he doesn't have an ace, my flush draws kind of get to go bananas. So I go bananas with aces there. Um, so here we get, hmm, we get jammed, and we call off with king queen suited. Oh. And we scam some nines, just to flip. But run good, looks like it's back. Uh, three bet with nines. Uh.
I like this better.
You see that's small? Look at that, three big blinds into fourteen, takes it down.
Nice.
I don't find those very small, uh, bet.
Well, that's a board we can bet range on. After we three bet.
Pocket nines. Let's take a look at the strategy. On the flop, it is checking one-third. It is betting one and a half big blinds, eight percent. We chose the size that's closer to three point nine, fifty-five percent of the time, which is the most improved strategy. I think on a board like this in a three-bet pot. I'm gonna bet the flop a lot like this, and I'm going to choose to polarize the turn if I want to bet here. Right on a two Broadway board.
That would, that would be my strategy.
I think that's gonna be a lot of what I do, but. Uh, ace five. I can hear Louis for practically scribbling notes in the background. Lockbox polarizes on turns. All right, oh, speaking of, speaking of lockbox.
Okay.
We do the very suspicious three, three bets off of this, but just to be respectful of this guy, so maybe it's real.
Yeah, so I actually go smaller if I'm gonna isolate her.
Yeah.
I just do five.
What about, trap the, trap the small blind?
Um.
I would like HK.
Not with kings.
No, not.
Yeah, I don't think the ascend wants to play multi-way, like, in a bounty tournament. Yeah, I don't think the SM wants to play multi-way, like in a bounty tournament, I think you can flat here.
And. And the big blind's gonna call often if we just flat.
Yeah.
That's true, that's true.
And this guy decides. Had enough of our micro three bet.
Oh, what size did you use? I thought it was six.
I use six.
He's three X. I'm, I, I think I agree with Ken, I might have gone like around five something.
Yep.
And I do that with like my, the range I wanted three bet.
Yeah, what, what's really the difference though, five or six, I think we're getting the same result from the cutoff.
Yeah, I don't know.
I can iso, because I can iso a wider range and when the button re jams, I still have raised folds.
Right.
Well, we get three bets here, micro three bet from the big blind here.
I think we have to defend wider here, cause it's carpet, but, yeah, we have to defend.
Yeah, I'm gonna wreck his life, I'm calling.
Yeah. So he undersized here, like he should be going probably eight. But he probably shouldn't be betting us, three betting us very much at all.
Why?
We're, um, we double cover him. And we're starting to get a little later in the tournament.
Yeah.
I find a very nitty fold there. I don't think that's a fold.
I don't thi- his range doesn't change based on your stack size, he should be playing, he's the effective stack, he should be playing his forty big blind range or whatever he was there.
You should find some, some uh, three bet bluffs versus the button.
Yeah, I think he's three betting probably, what, nine percent? Yeah, I have no idea. I'll look real quick, cause I like to know these numbers in my head, uh, big blind, where were you, button?
We were.
You definitely, and you have to defend wider versus.
His three bets are eleven percent all-in, six percent, so I mean, he should be raising there quite a bit.
Yeah, here is a fundamental range construction mistake, it is for sure a call.
Yeah.
Losing point seven nine EB to not defend here against.
And that's just keeping your mind, if you think he's fishy and only doing that with like his very strongest hands, and you can start folding when you make a marginal flop. And if he bets big, fold, like it doesn't matter. Like if you gotta read on him, like he's only doing this with tens plus ace, king, ace, queen, whatever, then.
And also look, his, his raise size is smaller than the. Raise size recommended for the.
Sure, sure, which could be, which could be strength or weakness, either way, I mean, yeah, show the stats on him.
Yeah.
He could be doing that with a, with a crappy hand. So he's on, well, that's only twenty, was it twenty hands or thirty-eight hands?
Thirty-seven hands.
I don't know.
Only, only twenty hands against this guy.
Okay, so.
I was looking, I was looking at the wrong head, yeah.
So that's not enough, you know, so he's still, where's the three bet at?
Zero, he has no three bets and twenty hands, and only fifteen percent BP, but again, small sample size.
Right. So we can't tell much, yeah. So still, it's under, you should need to defend now, I think, defend wider versus uh, cause he's gonna be three betting wider versus your, your range, you know, versus, versus cut up a button.
So, uh, second real blunder there, that should have been a clear defend.
Even thirty-five lines deep.
Alright, so button raises. This guy goes all in, king jack. We are in a, is this a four bet here against this weird arrangement? Right, is king jack, it, look, if, if we take this guy out of the equation, is king jack a three bet against this guy?
For sure, versus the button it is, from the big line versus the button, king jack off, well, not for sure. Um, I would say that the three bet versus the button, just from the big line though.
I would squeeze, if I was suited here, I might squeeze, but.
Yeah.
Or. It might not be in this, might not be in the solver, but you could click it back.
Yeah.
I think it is in the solver.
Why in the hell would you click it back here? You're just gonna make your life miserable.
I don't even love calling to be.
I think if you click it back, you can fold if you're shoved on.
Sure, so you just, you just give away half your chips in the process.
No, you give away four big blinds.
And it just gets checked all the way around. There's no need for us to bluff on the flop because we can't bluff the all-in. So we just take our king high to showdown and lose the threes, but all of us lose the fives. So a bit of a weird spot that, I wasn't sure if I should have folded this spot pre-flop.
I mean, I would think I, I would.
I like folding this free flop, I mean, you gotta really discount the, you gotta completely discount villain ten here, and if you're late, like. I don't know, man, you could be making a big mistake here. Overplaying here for um, whatever the small blind has. But I don't know, I've looked up spots like this before, and um, I've, I've been in camp over aggress here plenty of times and. HRC doesn't like it usually.
I misread the shove stack size, that's why, I thought it was five big blinds.
Two and four. Hey. So we choose the flat versus. Under the gun one.
Hmm. I could see folding here being a, a fine.
And it goes three ways. On a jack I flop, he bets and we.
Oh, I don't call this. No, big blinds in the hands though.
Yeah, you are, you're wide here for sure.
Yeah. Get there, and this guy checks now.
I see zero, zero reason to bet here.
Check, I'll, I'll bet when he checks to try to buy river.
No, we need a heart to bet.
Check behind, check behind.
So we find the check on the turn, which is probably okay. Four pairs, and he checks again.
Now we gotta get some, get some value.
Yeah, value bet small.
Hold on, he's gonna check a lot of, like he's, his ace ten, king ten, queen ten, so like. What are you trying to get value from? All his tens are better, all the tens are better than yours.
Five X, pocket six, pocket seven, pocket eight.
Never betting.
Nine.
Yep. Did he call us with ace, king, ace, queen? With, with uh. Without a heart?
He's got, all, like I said, the only tens he's got, BEA.
Look at me, I'm such a greedy animal, I decided to go for the bet.
I think that, I like to bet, but I think that sizing might be too big.
How much did you go for?
Looks like he went for like seventy percent.
I would go a bit more than that, but.
So.
Yeah, I would, I'd be around fifty. Eight out of twelve, that's seventy-five percent.
Guys, well, it's seven point nine into twelve point one five, it's, it's less than seventy-five, but yeah, it's, it's less than two-thirds.
I'm still trying to figure out what you're trying to get value from.
Uh, worse than a five.
Tell me what worse tens he has, hold on, he's under the gun.
Bucket seven, ten eight.
Under the gun, what worse tens does he have?
Ten eight.
But, but Ken, does he check the river with a ten after the turn goes check, check?
I think so.
No, I, I think he goes for small value.
Cause we should look at his range. I think this is way too thin.
So, you got pocket nine, she got pocket eight, she got ace five, you got complete ace, king, bluff catching. I mean, there's, there's hands he can, you can get value from, it's not crazy.
The ace five C bet multi-way, you think?
I don't know, some people, some people just randomly. Or not randomly, but I mean, they'll just range C bet sometimes, I mean, I would say it's probably not, it's not full frequency, I would think.
We can certainly have ace five of spades and do that too.
Put it in the machine.
You can have a five.
I like this play, put it in the machine.
I think it's.
Oh, you want Ken to take a look at that one?
Problem was, it was multi-way, so we're not gonna get a solve, I don't think.
Watch it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you can treat it as heads up ranges, right? Like the guy folds on the flop. It's not gonna be too crazy, the only thing that you have to kinda discount is like villain five just over, overbetting.
Oh yeah, look at under the gun versus hijack.
And I, I think after it goes check, check on the turn. Any bigger ten is supposed to go for small value.
I just think it's too thin, ace ten, king ten, fine, but I just think ten nine's too thin, honestly.
Okay.
Facing two checks is the, is I think the, the trigger there.
But I know that I.
See, the ten actually C bets are gonna check turn, check river, probably, right?
I'm, I'm gonna run into ten king there a lot. Right? But I think I'm still gonna get called by pocket sixes and pocket sevens and maybe ace, king and a queen.
We should look at it.
I like your bet, Peter.
I like it as well.
Well, we'll take a look, we'll, maybe we'll run that one out, the, out of the, the review.
Yeah, I like to bet, I just, the only thing I'm questioning is whether it should have been that big or a little smaller.
Four, five, jack, ten. I made a note for us, Ken. Um, here we go.
I'm, I'm owing a wager on it.
Wager.
Against the field.
Ken's got some confidence, boys.
He might be right.
It's too thin.
Okay.
Oh, maybe it is, but uh, I like it.
What do we do when we turn the nuts here?
Can you go check, check?
First off, I like betting one big blind on the flop, can you? No, you can't, okay.
No, like we are the, we're the small here.
We're a small blind, so we, I, we check everything on that board.
Honestly, if you, if you check the flop, I kinda like checking the turn here too.
We go for one, get it.
I don't hate this either.
Oh.
I just, uh, I don't see a, I don't see a path to victory here very much.
How are we?
Maybe the extra, yeah, that, that's the problem, right? How are you gonna get paid?
I have to hope that he has a five.
I mean, if he's got a queen somehow, you get it, you get everything, because it's just, I mean, maybe he gets stubborn and bluff catches you with an ace.
I think I like going all in here.
Calls us with jacks.
Yeah, look at that.
Alright. We're back. You're shipped up. That was fortunate.
I think he's supposed to bet like one, one hit big blinds on that flop.
Yeah, my tall, we high flop, maybe.
Poker code spamming the fuck out of me, I'm done with them. Three emails a fucking day now, all of a sudden.
As they say, fish on the line, it's good. Uh, we raise these pocket fours, get jammed, get out. Good. Line defense. We, ooh, ace side board, you should probably start folding our worst nines. Uh, nine, ten off.
Well, if he's betting range, I don't, I don't know if we get to fold nines yet.
Backdoor straight.
Yeah, yes.
Big blind, yeah, no, uh, we can't fold, can't fold a pair in a big blind.
Gets an ace I.
Oh, he's kinda short, but still, I don't think we get to fold.
Okay, what about now? Oh, check, check, thank goodness. We improve, uh-oh.
Well, not that much.
Yeah, but guess what? I'm getting itchy, I can feel it, the spades came in.
One big blind.
I wanna turn this into a bluff so badly.
Bet one big liner check.
Bluff catch.
Okay, thank goodness I checked. And we just cooler the nine.
I think this is a check call against, um.
See, that's how you get thin value, you bet one big blind and he calls you with his nine.
Inside is twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Ah, I said one big bar before I saw the river.
You did, you did.
You did.
What's the solve?
What's the solve? Where is our nine, ten off? Might be on the next page. Nine, ten off.
Yeah, but there's no flop there.
Yeah.
And you, you're in the big blind, I think.
Oh yeah, so that's a good way too, you can just scroll and look for position.
Nine, ten off.
Tiejack.
Us. That leads a popular hand for us today.
Hi Indy.
Andy.
Do you mind? Care on me?
Did you stop checking heads we've looked at to, for our finder?
I think it unchecks them actually.
Uh.
There's one, uh, it's a small blind, is that the same?
Nine, ten.
No, no, the board's not right.
Seven, four.
Cause it was paradise and.
I'm all, I'm all the way to the top of the page here, we don't have it on this page either, I'm just looking at big blinds and then the hand.
That's the end of the, that's the last page.
The tournament, so it's.
We missed it one, I go.
Um, go back to, and short hands, in the filter. Like we did before, that, that should bring up only the ten nines.
There. Nine off. There we go, yeah, a lot of nine, ten off.
Big blind.
Big blind was the one we're looking for.
Clear check.
River, peer check. Yeah, it's okay. See if I can tag that one and then clear and see if we'll get there.
What's the X mean? Do you X out? Does that clear, it might clear everything? What's the X next to the clear, which I'd say, yeah, just X that out. And I think you'll still have your mark.
It's not on page one. And our mark is not on page two. Yeah. See if our mark is on page three here.
Galen, did you make the twenty-five K or did you give up?
Oh, you're talking about for ACR, uh, yeah, I, I quit fire, I haven't logged into ACR since uh. Last week sometime.
Had a decent run in the squeeze last night, finished thirtieth.
That's not too shabby, thirtieth, that's pretty good.
I was third, got aces in versus sixes for heaps and uh, yeah, he flopped the set.
How much did you win that count?
Hundred and fifteen.
Yeah, not too shabby.
That's okay, yeah.
Not too shabby.
Forty, I forget.
ACR, I, it still bugs me like three hours of. Late.
Well, that was, that's a two-day joke, so it's three and a half hour or four and a half hours day one, and then you play day two. You're in the money after about an hour and a half.
Okay.
Okay, so multi-way pot. Checks to us on the button and we see bet, or we bet, this guy was the initial aggressor, we flatted with ace nine. And they all fold, alright. Rocket threes, we open and they fold, okay. Ace three, we open, get. Ace three, we open, get three bets and we give up. This is the micro three bets. Yeah, is this a defend? Ace three of spades.
It might be a lot of the range.
Me.
Some something in that area might also be in the four bet block.
Yeah, if I was deeper, I might four bet bluff the guy, but I I don't I don't hate the fold there, honestly. Because you gotta go like, uh, you're out of position, so you gotta make it like fifteen. So if you're gonna make it fifteen, I think you gotta probably go all in.
What's the effective stack size there? Forty?
Little less.
All right, he is going to be less. He is, yeah, forty.
Oh, yeah, forty.
All right, and you are.
Hi, Jack.
Hi, Jack. All right, so versus three, I'm running it on, um. Preflop Academy.
Either way, we face another micro three bets with our ace.
Ace three suited mixes all in and calls and folds.
Yeah, I thought that's why I figured it. I figured it'd be either all in or fold mostly.
Well, actually, it's mostly call.
If you were deeper, uh, you could find some three, but not all ends, right?
But they're they're all zero EV, eighteen percent shove, eighteen percent fold, sixty-four percent call.
So like fifty, you could probably find, uh, not all in three bets.
So, uh, three bet pot and the flop goes check, check.
Yeah, baby.
Give it a big, little probe bet.
You have no draws. You just have two overs. Good showdown. I would just check again.
Check or bet larger? Or do you check?
Okay, so I think probably my thinking at the time was the queen of spades blocks his suited combos that contain the jack. So I think it's probably why I bet here. Calls. And the king. And check, check, and sure enough, we see a screen.
Micro three bets. That's the new meta.
Yeah, well, we've seen it three or four times in this tournament, and I don't react very well to it. I tend to overfold here.
When stacks get below fifty, I usually use the micro through bets, too.
But that was a micro, micro, micro. Do you use it that small? Or you just go go five point five or something like that?
I usually go five point five. Sometimes I have five, but most of the time I'm five point five, five point seven, sometimes. Uh, we were looking at. Table, it's a two X and final tables on one of the tools we use. Which I have to learn.
Right.
This spot.
So this was was.
So we raise it up to the flats.
Yeah.
We get a queen high flop that checks through. Flush completes. We check again, and he bets. Half pot.
It's big enough to make me fold.
So we're ahead of all a single club bluffs, probably. It depends if how sticky you want to get.
Yeah, I've, I don't know. I surprised and kind of.
Yeah, I don't hate a call, honestly. I mean. Not calling any rivers.
It got there.
You think he should go for it on this river?
No.
No, not not with a four flush.
Oh, he has a straight.
Yeah, he has a straight.
Okay, so he just checks his straight. Okay.
And then he laughs because he scammed you.
Yeah. Okay, we raise, get three bet, we fold.
Lots of ace kings.
Ace king, ace king. Every hand going to church. And it gets checked through. And nine, five, six, double flush draw. Think I would probably bet here if I had the king of spades and the ace of hearts, double blocking. Take the check line. And he gives us a big fat net.
I think we could fold there.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Probably did.
Is that Galen approved fold? Yeah, I think so.
And defend that. Uh, seven deuce. Blind, multiway defense.
That's I would fold there. After there's, after there's an intervening caller, the big blind range does get smaller.
Yeah. Gets checked through. Connectedness improves. That is bad. And he stabs him, we give up. Okay. Another micro three bet from out of position. Should continue.
That is fishy.
This step is good, I think.
He comes out with a pretty big bet size for his stack. We make maybe a very fishy call here. Let's read that pot.
It's close. I could see the call, but it's close. I don't know.
And he jammed.
Wow.
The problem, like, when we get in those three bad pops, tough.
What G two is there said for the at the flop?
Let's take, see if we can find that one. King, jack of spades.
So the three bit, um, size pre flop out of position, what was it?
It was four and change. Five point four.
And you think that's good? At this deck size.
It's only twenty, so.
Well, may, I mean, I'm not saying it's not, but I just, that's a new way.
Well, we do block some of his value range with the king jack.
Um, we'll look here. If not, we'll find it in the filter.
Are you asking if sizing is good or are you asking if the call is good?
If the sizing is good.
I think. Is, is out of position, so it goes a little bit up and think six maybe, but five point eight. Thing is decent. If you go seven.
He's right there. It's the fifth one.
I think you have king jack suited in this one.
There we go.
Easy call.
So, uh, it is a one hundred percent call pre flop. And the bet on the flop and it is a ninety-six percent call. And.
Never folding.
Is primarily a check. And the river. Is highly mixed.
Indifferent.
Zero EV decision either.
I think population you can lean towards folding more.
Yeah, maybe. If I start this, maybe it'll keep the star mark. So we make the lay down. On the river and continue on in the tournament. Fortunately, we pick up aces.
Decent hand.
Get some chips.
What was the action there on the aces?
Button open. And we just three bet.
Is there ever any calls there?
The only fourteen bigs.
I know, I would that short, I think sometimes aces call. I don't know about small blind now.
Yeah. I don't know that aces want to play multiway, though. Right? Right now, we can take down one, two, three, four big blinds and change our stack from fourteen to eighteen. Which is pretty good. And I mean, it's still getting called a lot.
I think if you call there, uh, small blind, it's a mistake versus two players.
Yeah.
I think it raises everything. The only, the only thing.
Yeah.
Go open the button.
We open on the cutoff, the button open. On the ace's hand, we have fourteen bigs.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe I make mistakes there sometimes, but I, uh, I do call there sometimes at fourteen, just because. I don't know. I'm so shallow. I don't really care. I I want somebody in the pot to go all in with me.
Yeah, one, but not two.
Not two. No, 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 no. If there if there's ever two, I I'm sorry, I missed that. Was that a squeeze spot or just a heads up pot?
On the small blind, uh, versus. It was a heads up pot.
Okay, so I mean, it's gonna be high probability that, you know, the big blind's coming along for the party, right? So I I understand. The logic, but I don't think I care at fourteen big blinds. I don't know that. I don't know if that's the right answer, though.
Facing the micro three bet again. Will pocket sevens?
Man, this is a miserable spot.
Uh, I don't know.
Like, I think. He's giving you the right price to, uh, set mine, to be honest. Like this, he's giving you such a good price.
Yeah. We are, uh.
If you're calling, if you're calling just to set mine, it the math doesn't work. You're not getting quite good enough.
Well, you're also in position, so it's like, that's the other aspect of it. You're calling for position.
One, and I mean, sevens have a reasonable chance of winning the hat. Like, it's not easy to make a pair.
Oh, no, I agree, but if you're calling just within no set, no bet mentality, it's not deep enough.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I misspoke. I mean, I'm calling because I have position and, um. You know.
Yeah, I I make a mistake a lot of there.
Running ship PV pre flop, uh. Joe.
Huh?
If you if you look at this pre flop, it's probably gonna tell you, it's good. It's probably gonna tell you to jam sevens.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Jam or a fold.
Maybe not, though, because we're in position. I think it might, though.
Again, a little nitty by nature. I keep, I really struggling against these, uh, micro three bets.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, Pete, they're they're hard to deal with, so it's like.
Oh, boy. Guess we gotta win this hand somehow.
So you open, he jams, you call. Seems good.
He opened jammed. He opened.
That's okay, I think.
Yeah, now for eleven big blinds, I think that's perfect.
Yeah, from the cutoff, it's probably, it's probably fine.
Little loose of him with sixes there, calling our jam, maybe. So thirteen earlier position now, so we just open the ace nine. And get it through. Small blind that versus blind, definitely not jamming this.
I like that name, Nitty by Nature. Sounds like a good, uh, screen name.
Ooh, we pick up a gutter and decide to bluff. And we get it through.
I think this is good when you pick up that little smidge of equity. I think a big bet's in order.
Ace nine, again, we just open and it gets through.
Good.
People not making our life very hard here. Ace queen, stuff the turkey.
Yeah, you just put.
Yeah.
Seems good.
Jacks. And raise it through. And a lot of the unopposed stuff through here. See if we can do it with ace four. Nope.
A little bit of resistance. All right, so, uh.
All right.
Do you, do you ever check here? I think you could check here sometimes. Betting's obviously, betting small is not a wrong answer at all.
Are you talking about the flop or turn?
Well, the flop.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm only, this is a two street hand at most. You're never going three streets with those. So it's like either gonna be a bet, check. Bet line, or it's gonna be like a check, bet, bet line, I think.
Against the big blind, I'm very inclined to bet this connected Broadway board.
I think we're betting a lot.
So I am probably betting. Ninety-five percent of range here. Right?
And that is disagree.
Do you disagree?
No, I cannot disagree. Sorry.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you cannot. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad bet at all. I just like, you know. If it's not a range bed spot, that would be a pretty good candidate to balance your check range with.
Oh, yeah, I agree. Yeah, if if it was less connected, now it's a little bit wet.
Yeah, and that's fair. I may have discounted the connectivity of it, which would be good evidence for, uh, keeping going, right?
Yeah, exactly. But I think ace Broadway board will probably.
It's checking one percent.
You're right, so it is a rangy spot, probably due to the connectivity, as you guys all pointed out.
Yeah, and the the high Broadway values here. But when it comes to the turn, it looks like it plays check, check, ninety-four percent.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if you get caught on this flop and you have this hand, I would be shocked to see it. Go, yeah, maybe it's, maybe if it was a blank two, like if you, it was like the two of spades, let's say. Maybe you would, uh, see some like double barreling to check the river stuff.
Yeah, but two of flush draw completing.
Yeah, yeah, you just.
Look at us.
You know, I don't hate this. Like, okay, so like, for the same reason, I don't hate this because this hand is gonna be hard to play versus a polar river bet. And this kind of gives you like an out, right? I do think your bet's a little small. Like, if it was me, I would have gone closer to like half pot, I think.
Well, that's that's why I think I would check it, because if you're betting the turn, most of your bets are going to be a larger sizing, which then pushes this back more into a marginal made hand.
When it does bet the flop, when it does bet the turn, which is five percent of the time, it does use the four big blind size.
Yeah, yeah, that seems, yeah, that seems like a good sizing and like, uh, I mean, I don't know how hard it is to change that to a, let's say, a spade, perhaps, something like that. Um, just to see if it affects how we play this hand a little bit. I I'd be curious, you know? A leak in my game that I that I discovered when I was taking coaching was, um. I leaned heavily on bet small flops, check, check turns, and I would rely on bluff catching rivers, which is far less profitable than, um. Double barreling in a lot of instances.
Pete, you're looking at the big blind range here for we bet.
Oh, okay, oh, sorry. Turn. Check, and it's our turn here.
Right, so now we have no completion, pushes our bet range up quite a bit, right? We see a lot of the six point two and four point whatever. But with our small ace, it seems to be more range betting, right? Is that what we're seeing?
Yeah, every, every ace is betting half pot pretty much across the board.
Right, so, yeah, this makes, yeah, this, this is what I would have expected to see, something similar to this.
Yeah, and when the flush completes, it just goes much more cautious.
Mm-hmm.
And then, what does our range look like when it is the two diamonds?
Well, we, we, we uh, put the brakes on pretty hard. With a lot of these uh, marginal, I mean, I, so it pushes like these weak, single pairs to marginal made status. Like, anything below ace seven here? It's kind of the, it's kind of the marker. So you see a lot of checking with ace seven to ace deuce, which ace deuce is two pair. And then you see it on the offsuit branch as well. The betting frequencies, I would guess, are probably supported with a single diamond in a lot of these cases.
Yeah, all the, all the aces that are betting are a single diamond, all the suited stuff is checking now. That's not diamonds.
Yeah, so.
None of it's diamonds, it's all, so you're just betting your best aces that are off suits. Your single aces that have a diamond, and all these just wanna check.
Right, because you know, if you get played back. If you get played back at, you're in a quite a miserable spot, and then, you know.
You don't really wanna fold top pair here.
Yeah, not at all. It's uh, managing SPR.
But we push it through and it goes.
Nice.
Open king jack, probably bottom of range.
Yeah, definitely is. Easy let go, very nice.
Next king jack on the button.
Suited, the suited variety this time. You know, I kinda like uh, I kinda like just jamming here.
Yeah.
Make your life a little easier, cuz like, if villain two jams on you, like. It's a hard situation, cuz I think you're supposed to call sometimes. But I don't know.
Is this, is this a raised call off?
Yeah, that, that's, that's why I like jamming pre-flop, cuz I don't know the answer to that question.
Exactly, yeah, I like to jam.
But get it through, this guy with three big blinds gives it up.
The, the big blind should never be folding.
I would say this, um, I, I would guess it's probably. If it's, if this is like really ICM rich, it's probably a fold.
If it, yeah, if it's the bubble, he can. Try to fold his way in.
Do you know what stage of the tournament you're at, Pete? It looks like two hundred and sixty thousand chips is the average stack. This is. The dirty thirty, is that where we're at?
Yeah, this is the dirty thirty.
Uh, I'll find that, I'll find that.
This guy's blind defense is low, right? He's only defending about one-third of the blind, small sample size, but.
This is one of the green bannered tournaments, so. So it should be similar to like. Did, I wonder if it's the same as the daily special ten?
It's the, no, it's a smaller field, it's only a hundred and fifty-five runners or something?
Oh, yeah, no, what I'm saying is, as far as the starting stack structure, it looks like all these green tournaments start with about ten K chips. They all start with ten K chips. So I, the fact that average stack was three hundred and sixty thousand, you have to be very close to the final table here, I would think.
Right.
Hmm. Ooh. This is close, cuz his shelf isn't that big. I, if it's ICM, it's probably a fold.
Man, I don't even know, like, I, I don't know the answer here. Like, I think I would make a nitty fold here. Just because it, it, I don't know. It's probably a call, but I like folding, cuz.
Let's look for jack ten, starting at the end of the tournaments. Jack ten of hearts? There it is.
Yeah, this would have to, I think you'd have to HRC this to get an accurate response.
Raise. All in.
Um, no, nothing, anyone did anything wrong. Um, I had a great morning experience one day.
Oh, we should have jammed.
It should be.
Right, so it wants you to jam that pre, right? Makes your life a little easier.
Yeah, that's our problem here. We should have jammed it pre-flop.
And it, I won't, I can rationalize that, that makes sense to me.
It won't give us the answer, cuz we're not supposed to be in next spot.
Yeah. Okay, so this should have been a jam. Feels bad. Like, I mean, we can see here. There's, this is jack ten, this is the end of the tournament, so we gotta be final two tables here.
I do see why though, too, cuz even though we have a stack a little bit too large to, where we might wanna min raise. Everybody else's stack is. Except for villain two. We wanna shove against.
Maybe this is just a fold with this guy right behind us, and this chip arrangements, probably final two tables. Either way, we get ourselves in trouble and then out of trouble. And we have chipped down seriously, but find an ace jack. Get it through. And. We shove ace nine, seems fine.
Yep. I think.
East on the river, we were good all the way.
Easy peasy.
Another ace.
Ooh, um, um. Probably okay. I just get really nervous because you don't have any fold equity here.
Ace nine suited, so this is ace ten off. Are we shoving ace ten off here? Against.
We first it open, I, I, I think it's a fold, to be honest. If it's like, if you're final two tables, I'm just letting go of these type of hands versus um. Aggression that's already been, like, you know, versus V pip right there, if I don't have any fold equity.
Yeah, I don't think against, I don't think against daddy you get to play. This might be a mistake on my part. Oh, boy, we got it. Oh, well, looks like we scammed someone. He scammed us and we re-scammed him on the turn.
The good old scam, re-scam. What did he have? So he had ace five. You were actually doing quite well here. Looking at it.
So. Okay.
And now he's got a competitive stack for the final table.
Yeah, and we have jacks. This, and we get a gift. Ooh, scum, sorry ace. We just turned nuts.
I just got.
And now we have a big stack again. And we are going back to war. Re-hand, this has gotta be final table.
You know, it'd be interesting to throw that uh, ace nine spot into an HRC simulator.
Yeah, thinking back to that ace nine spot, like, we've gotta be at the final table with that ace nine.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, it's like, it's gotta be so dang close, man. If you're actually at the final table, I, I don't even think it's that close. I think it's just like, pretty clear fold then.
There is that ace nine. Ace nine right here. Interested to see if it uses the ICM uh, sims here.
Yeah, might.
Um, yeah, you have to use the MTT ICM.
Yeah, it is approved. And if we study the spot, we'll see if it tells us if it uses the ICM model here. Cause it is a final table.
Yeah, um, the, the ICM model's important, and I think actually looking at what kind of structure it set it up with is also important if it gives you that information.
Right, it is.
Chip EV.
Going us, chip EV.
Hmm.
And it is being very weird about how it does it.
Yeah.
We gotta go back to here. Chip EV, ten big blinds. And we change this to ICM. Then it asks us to change the stack size.
Oh, you could reduce the players down to how many there were at that time.
Um, and you select two table.
Of us. I think this was a final table arrangement. In, and we were the. Button with ten versus the cutoff covered us. So like.
Do, do, yeah, or the one right below that, too.
No, the cup, the cutoff opened and covered us.
Yeah, and the one right below it, he covers us too.
Yeah, this one. But there were other shorties, there was another shorty too. Uh, so maybe more of this arrangements. So, yeah, ace nine still in there, earnings point zero six chips.
So, yeah, well.
Yeah. And an ICM five-handed with the average stack of fifteen, with us having ten, and being covered by the guy who opened. It is shoving all the suited aces, but look how low equity it is. Uh, shoving the ace nine, the ace ten.
This is, this is die jack, uh, range.
Is this a scenario where you can generate some folds ever?
Button. Yeah, ace nine goes. Thanks.
Oh, it's like the floor, it's like the floor in this, in this arrangement.
Yeah, the um. With IC, even though Chippy V should never get much fold equity, I think with ICM, it does get some fold equity.
Well, you identified the floor pretty well, Peter, cuz you were asking about ace ten off, and if you take a look there. You know, that, that's the interesting question, right? Ace nine suited, ace ten off. So. Uh, yeah, it's close, right? That's the synopsis, it's close, so, you know.
So ace jack off, ace nine suited. Either way, uh, I take a very thin spot, but he was also ace five, right? So he was a little wide on his side too.
Exactly, yeah, I would agree.
Okay, uh, we see that and take it down, three-handed. And king ten. This guy shoves. We are covering. Do we wanna take this spot? This feels very flippy.
Yeah, and if we lose, then we're not covering villain one anymore.
Yeah, if we lose, we all become seventeen bigs.
Yeah.
But we take the spot. And we flop the king and river the ten. Big game ace, so we take a forty-sixty spot, so we're not in a great spot there.
So what happened here? What happened? Did you open? Oh, you're three-handed?
Yeah, this guy opened ripped. And we are the big blind with king ten.
Ooh. Probably okay. Feels close, though, again.
Yeah. Uh, this is the king ten hand here, I think. Uh, and pre-flop, it is just a hundred percent call.
Nice.
One point seven nine.
Well, it's probably doing it in Chippy B.
Yeah, we can change that arrangements. I see, um.
Three players.
Players.
And he shoved for seven.
And so we'll do, he is the button at five, ten, and twenty, so that will equal the arrangements we have. And yeah, king nine is, oh, he is all in. Olds, and it's on us. And we are clearly calling king nine, we're calling all our suited kings.
Why, but this is, this is for five, it was seven, but I think it's a call.
Yeah. Yeah, but he had, he had seven, we had twenty-three, so this is five, ten, twenty. So. King nine is definitely gonna find itself.
Yeah, it, it'll be, even if you move it up to seven, the king nine won't drop out when it's that wide.
Yeah, right, like it's seven to twenty-four versus five to twenty, so.
And it's, it's not a disaster if you uh, done it.
Yeah, I mean, this is just a gambly spot. You, you gotta gamble, and this is clearly in the range where you wanna gamble. All your kings and aces has gotta gamble. Right, because his range, when we take a look at his all-in range. Ooh, it's not good. Although that's him, button. So this is his range, he's shoving. Lots of aces, lots of kings, lots of suited stuff, lots of offsuit stuff that has high cards. So I guess king nine suited is just ahead of enough stuff to make it a call against the entirety of the range. This guy is gonna find pocket twos to shove here and. And upwards. So, okay, we get there. Now we are heads up, and I will say, this is probably the least practiced spot that I have in my game. Anyone do uh, heads up uh, work, ever?
Nope.
We've, I've, I've looked at some of the.
I play, I, I. I play a lot of single table tournaments, so I, I have a lot of. Heads up spot.
Alright, we'll let you guide us through this spot, Eric. What do you think of this uh? Open, first of all, do you like this size, or do you like a bigger size?
Uh, I just mini raise, uh, it's a butt.
All the time, all of my raises from the button heads up are min raises.
Okay. Get that one through. Do seven. The fan. Should I have given this up?
I just, I never limp, so I just raise, I, I just raise all in, I just mini raise or I fold. But maybe, maybe I, maybe I should limp sometime, but I don't.
Not, in MTTs, you should have some limps too. Um.
Because you wanna limp trap with some of your best stuff.
I do fold some of my very worst. I would have found a fold with this one.
Yeah, I would have folded too.
We take a stab because we have a heart. Go through.
Hmm.
Give it a min raise. Our worst king. Falls. Connected flop, we have a heart, so I'm probably gonna stab. Seem reasonable?
That's what, that would lead me to check more than stab, but maybe I'm playing it backwards.
I checked here, I didn't expect myself to check. Alright.
Yeah, he doesn't have any aces, right?
Check, and we bet big, about a big one point four. Calls, and are we done? He, yeah, gives us a big bet on river. So we let it go. Seven, four. We limp, bottom of range. Flop. Three straights, nothing going for us, we check. He checks, ten comes out. Checks, we give it a stab. Get it through.
Yep.
Off, and he lays. Six, we raise, he stuffs. Alright.
I'm folding.
I think it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty clear fold.
Always.
Alright. Uh, one all in, we got a couple of folds.
And also, this is the first time he ripped on your min raise.
Yep.
I think I folded.
Okay. We'll, we'll never know.
Especially when I get them into like, down near ten big blinds. I don't wanna accidentally give them a whole bunch of extra chips. I wanna keep them where, I wanna keep them where they're handicapped by their stack.
Okay. So I have been doing a lot of limping with the trash side, kind of hoping to induce, but we just keep getting some trash stuff.
Well, he's letting, he's letting you limp with your trash, so you can keep limping with your trash.
So, let's take a look here quickly.
I think typically the soft suit trash stuff, actually, you're supposed to raise a lot of it. And the stuff that you're looking to take post-flop is the suited stuff.
So this guy um, seems to play pretty poorly against aggression. He's folded fourteen. He's folded fourteen out of seventeen times to three bets. Three betting only six percent of the time himself. He pipping twenty-three, raising fifteen. Now, not a great sample size. But. Um, over folding to see bets a little, maybe?
Way over folding to see bet sixty percent, right? Well, I had, I mean, some of this is heads up, so it's hard to know.
Only a hundred and thirty halves, so.
So if he's over folding to see bets on the flop, do you think it'd be safe to say he's probably over folding to min raises pre-flop?
Possibly, but I'm certainly limping a lot of trash and see betting a lot of one big blind here.
I think it's the opposite, Gail, and I think he's defending, uh, like, everything and then just folding, because he has such a wide shitty range. Yeah, maybe so, maybe he's just loose passive.
He gives us a raise here, but we have a suited hand.
You want to take this post-flop for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Uh-oh, welcome to NBA Jam.
Yeah, you're probably just going to, uh.
Jamistan.
Yeah. Afghanistan.
Jamistan?
Uh, you know, I don't even know if you need a jam necessarily, like, you can probably like. Like, as, uh, yeah, maybe you could click it, I don't think jamming's bad, to be honest, it's probably fine. So my only thing about calling is, we have queen high right now, and, you know, we benefit greatly from some kind of, um, some fold equity.
Yeah.
So if we think he's loose passive, he's probably got something he likes here.
So I give him the min click.
I don't hate this.
Then we get this.
This is out of the playbook, yeah, you're just, you're, you're going for it now, you're just going for it, he's got worse flush draws here, he's got straight draws here.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh, no, no, no.
No, no.
I think you, you have to call there.
You have days, you have days, but, uh, you, you have to stay there.
I can tell you this, right now, even if he's playing face up with an ace here in his hand, you still. Probably have the, the odds, the pot odds price to call.
And if, if he's doing this with a jack, which he probably could be with being so short. You even now have an over.
Click back, click back, uh, one step. I will say this, um. I can, what are your odds? Your odds are, you need twenty percent?
No, that's his small bet, he.
Uh, yeah, go. If you're ever folding here, if you're ever folding here, I, I would just remove the click from your game completely and play jams. Yeah, that's what I said.
Hmm.
Yeah, because if you, if, if you fold to that on the flop. You should not, uh, call ever, uh, pre-flop, you just jam pre-flop.
Yeah, I think the click becomes significantly worse if you find yourself over folding to, in some spots. So you need thirty percent equity, you have at least thirty-six, right? So. Yeah, that sounds about right.
So the way I should have played it is, I probably just should have called here.
You could have called or you could have jammed, probably similar EV. What does it say on the, what does the solver machine say? Just says call.
Queen four, queen four, what does the solver say? Hey, how about that? We have a solver.
On the flop, we don't have the heads up.
White wizard.
That.
It doesn't matter too much, there's some card removal, but, I mean, if you got blind versus blind, it'll be close, it'll give you the, the general gist, right?
Yeah, but the position would, will be wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have the, the heads up stuff so much.
Um. But if you have, you have five free, uh.
Uh, go to sob, I think you can change it to heads up.
You can solve five, uh, ends out of your, uh.
Okay.
If you go to the hand, you can go through, uh.
You get five freebies a day, huh?
Yeah, yes, five freebies a day, like I said. For, uh, heads up.
Okay.
MTT, you change it to.
I thought you only got one.
Okay. Heads up since sitting go, no, no, no.
Oh, oh, it's already showing you heads up solution.
One person at a time, please, thank you.
Heads up since it didn't go.
Okay.
Then you go from there.
Okay.
It, it was already set for MTT heads up.
Yeah, but it didn't have the solution.
Yeah, it doesn't have.
Because heads up sit and go is a little bit off, because the heads up sit and goes don't have the, um, anti.
Okay. Fair, so stack distribution, where were we? We were.
I think it was twenty-five to fourteen.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight, fourteen, also two to one. Two to one's the important part. Whoops. Uh, not seventy-two big blinds. Uh, effective stack quart.
Quite aggressive.
And so small blind range. So our queen four. Is a call. And. His raise should have been bigger.
Okay.
Right, when he raises this size.
Well, now you have us, eh, as a raise.
Sorry, we call. And his raise is small. And our queen four is in there. So we call. And the flop is.
Ace.
Ace jack eight, ace eight of diamonds. Ace, eight of diamonds, jack of spades. Reached your free. Oh, wow, 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 wow.
It, it won't let you solve it in the MTT heads up.
Um. Heads up.
You have starter two, um, I guess.
Fourteen.
No, you gotta pay for every individual slot.
Or.
Above the pro.
Raises.
Yeah.
So.
Peter or starter?
Um, I paid.
You have premium?
Uh, paid seven hundred dollars for a year, or something like that, six hundred dollars for a year.
That's the premium.
Okay. So on this flop. Uh, he bets one and a bit.
Well, you check, right? No, is it a check bet?
Now, he's small.
Yeah, we're the small blind, so he's the big blind, he acts first.
Hmm.
So. He bets. And it's on us, and it's mixing with queen four, but it's calling with queen four of diamonds.
Oh, yeah, never raising it.
It's a call. Okay, and it doesn't matter what the turn is, because it, the money went all in. While we folded.
Yeah, I think for your equity, you have to call.
You can't have him, you can't do a click and have him jam. Never mind.
Oh. Goodbye that way, sorry, Ken.
No, it doesn't matter. I mean, I don't think you can fold, but I thought that's why, what we were gonna look at. As confident as Ken was earlier about whatever scenario, I'm equally as confident here, I think folding would be insane. Yeah. But I've eaten my words before.
So he limps, and we jam king three.
You are, you're starting to be mad, or what?
Yeah, I'm starting to be bad. And he calls it off.
Oh, wow, you got called here.
And we call, we find the king, and we find another king, and that's how we win the tournament, we obviously suck out on. A guy who woke up with ace ten.
Did you?
EG. Okay.
GG, thanks a lot for sharing the hands and everything.
We got one more hand, man.
Thanks a lot for watching, everybody.